Rockport Center of the Arts supporter, becoming the only individual that has served the organization in every facet possible, art festival exhibitor, master artist, curator, donor, board member, participant in important committees, including the Strategic Planning Committee, which charted course and development of the New Arts Center campus, and whereas Anita Diebel stands, states that her greatest accomplishment and legacy is raising and nurturing her family, which includes her support from her late husband Bud, her sons Dean and Todd, her grandson Dylan. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council, the City of Rockport, Texas do hereby declare Friday, July the 5th, 2024 as Anita Diebel Day in the City of Rockport, and call upon the citizens of Rockport to recognize Anita Diebel being selected by Rockport Center of the Arts as the honorary chair for the 32nd Annual Art Auction Gala, which precedes the 56th Annual Rockport Art Festival, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand, cause the official seal, the City of Rockport, Texas be affixed this the 25th day of June, 2024. And there's only one way to do this on three, one, two, three.
Yeah, lady has a lot of fans.
Yes, she does. All right, next item on the agenda is proclaiming the month of July is Parks and Recreation Month. Have I got folks here for parks and recreation? I'm gonna read this anyway, if they don't get here, that's all right. There is somebody. Okay, proclamation, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of community throughout this country, including the city of Rockport, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, it also promotes time spent in nature with positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing the space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas parks and recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutritional services, education programming and activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education, which are critical to childhood development, and whereas parks and recreation increase communities' economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Rockport, Texas, we do hereby recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Rockport, and call upon all the citizens of Rockport to recognize the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. In witness whereof I have here and to set my hand, an official seal, the City of Rockport, Texas is 25th day of June, 2024. There's our guy. If you'll meet me over there under that big disc on the wall, we're gonna fix it there. Established presence of quorum will have a roll call at this time. Ward one?
Here.
Ward two?
Here.
Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
Mayor, here, we do have a quorum present. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. I have one card, Andrew Kane, if you'd come up to the podium there. Got three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Andrew Kane, 2106 Latimer Drive. Gonna be quick tonight, can't stay for meeting, I got property tax appraisal hearing in the morning. Couple things on agenda regarding Data Pros. See y'all got credited back $7,600 when the mistake that cost the citizens of Rockport, the city rate paid Rockport over $500,000. They made a mistake, didn't notify the people, they've admitted, they've come up and said we made a mistake. What's disheartening is that city staff failed to notify the non-papered bill, the paperless billing people. So even if Data Pros hadn't made this mistake, the city of Rockport did never notify the paperless billing people. So there's a couple building on both sides. The difference is, Data Pros admit they made a mistake, city staff has yet to admit they made a mistake, although I've got the free information request, emails between them talking about it. It's your character. I mean, you, the mayor sat here and said, and Vanessa back here said, this mistake was made at no fault their own, not true, by an outside vendor, true. But y'all made mistakes too. You know, learn from your mistakes, admit them, and move on. I see you're going to another vendor, I mean, you're gonna fire Data Pros, I get it, cost you over $500,000. Going to another vendor is 8.2% more. When there was a third bid, it was much cheaper, it just y'all don't wanna get the three-year contract, which is where you spend more on the mistake that y'all are part of. Next item is the Main Street Visitors Kiosk at Art Installation. Y'all bid it for $500,000, you called the visitors' kiosk, you're spending $17,400 on the kiosk, on a $500,000 estimated project. It's not gonna pass the primary use, on the use of hot funds. I mean, your budget for $500,000, you're probably a hundred and something thousand dollars over budget already. I find it hard to believe, the last meeting, I asked y'all not to do it, you didn't even have a bid for the dirt work, that you estimated $174,000? It came in at 341, you can decline that later, but you've already spent hundreds of thousand dollars on the restroom on a skid, with no air conditioning, you know, leave it to government. The utility of city ratepayers petition, still active, the city missed the deadline, I've talked to Brett about it, talked to y'all about it. You got a deadline in July, if you miss that deadline, you're gonna be, we're gonna start pre-trial hearing on merits of the case. I've reached out to y'all multiple times, I can withdraw the petition, it's up to me. I've reached out to y'all, person, phone calls, emails, that talk to us, we'll withdraw the petition. Yet, y'all are so proud this staff will not admit the mistakes they've made, I'm talking about, and they won't even make a phone call to us. I could withdraw the petition tomorrow and stop all this homework that y'all are failing to get to the judge, it's just not necessary. You're wasting our taxpayer money because of the staff's pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Following items may be acted upon in a single motion, no separate discussion or action. On this particular one item will be held unless pulled from the consent agenda, in which case we'll consider it like we're doing now. Do I have a motion?
A move to approve item five as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not our call for vote, ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous, consent agenda passes. Item number four. Consider approval on first of two readings ordinance number 1937 of the City of Rockport, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances to provide a process for petitions for release from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing a savings clause, providing that the ordinance is cumulative for all ordinances, amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 5.500, application fees to add a fee to process for petition for the release of extraterritorial jurisdiction, and amend Article A Severability Clause, providing for publication, providing an effective date. Ms. Goodwin.
So, Senate Bill 2038, which was adopted or passed at the ADA legislation session, and what this bill did was allow residents who live in the city's ETJ to file a petition to ask to be removed from the, from the city's ETJ. So, the legislative gave us processes to handle, how to handle this, but I'm requesting that a ordinance is adopted, which lays it out clearer, who handles what processes. It also lays out the required documents that have to, that have to be included with the petition. So, in order to, for someone to ask for a request, they have to file a petition, and then there's certain required documents. They also have to be the landowner or of the majority value of the area. There's some other requirements as well. The way that this process works will involve a lot of different departments and a lot of different city staffs, and if, if it is approved, and we do release them from ETJ, we have to reprint, reprint our maps every time. So, I'm requesting that we charge a thousand dollar fee to file a petition, which would cover the costs that the city is gonna incur, and the way we came up with that was we took different people's salaries and the time they're gonna spend on it, as well as the cost to do a map. Now, this will, if the council decides to not release them, or if they request to go to a city election, you'll have election expenses and we can't ask to be recovered on those.
Okay. Questions, Council?
Would that be a special election, or would this be on the next call?
It would be a special election. Your, your general elections are only for your, your candidates. So, anything other than a general, anything other than a candidate election is considered special.
Even if it takes, but would?
Right.
In their petition, what is the timeframe to call that election?
We have forty, the council has 45 days, if I'm not mistaken from reading the bill again. Forty-five days from the minute I get the petition, they have to file it with the city secretary's office. You can choose to not do anything, which means that they automatically will, you know, will receive the, the release, but, or we, you can choose to say no, and then it goes to an election.
Other questions?
I made a motion to approve, item number four is red.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Mayor, I'm, I said, five, is that okay?
Yeah. Because it was the big letters.
Sorry.
Item number five, consider the approval on first of two readings ordinance number 1938, the City of Rockport, Texas, amending ordinance 1911, which adopted the 2023-2024 budget, beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for publication, providing for an effective date. Mr. Sorrell.
This is, we're proposing a budget amendment of the hotel motel funds out of reserves, and what these monies will do will support the rentalscape platform that Kerry Dietrich had presented on, I believe it was May 28th. This is just providing the funding for that, for that software, to support hotel motel funds.
Okay. Any questions, Council?
Move to pro, provide, move to approve item five as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
You got a second, that way first.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Item number six, consider the request for a conditional use permit for property located at 125 Lamar Drive, also known as Lot 3, Block 230 Burton, Danforth subdivision, correctly zoned R1, first single-family dwelling district. Ms. Dietrich.
This is a request for a conditional use permit. Mr. Ayers couldn't be here tonight, his associate Randy has Mr. Ayers on the phone, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, let me call him up.
Hello?
Okay.
You're, you're on the air with us here, Ryan.
Okay.
Yes, tell us about what you're, what it is you're asking us to do with your property and the, or the special use permit.
Well, basically, you know, I've, I've been down in the Rockport area about 14 years, and I bought this piece of property in 2019, and I'm planning on retiring down there. I'm very close to retirement, and I still own a farm in Kansas, and I've got a bunch of, basically, building materials, I've got some hurricane windows, I got off a job, I built hospitals, so. I have some hurricane windows, I've got some high-end mill work to come up off of different jobs, and, you know, just equipment and material that I plan on incorporating into my house. So, basically, what I'm looking at is, I had Rafter Jay, which is out of Victoria, they're, they're a commercial builder, or, you know, residential barn builder, and him and I talked, we got it, windstorm engineered drawings, all the paperwork put together, I gave him a down payment on all that engineering, and then, basically, he wanted the money to release the, the structure itself, so the, the bones of the building. And, so I, I put all that down payment on there, and then he went in to apply for the building permit, and they said, no, you, you have to build a house before you can build a shop. So, now I have a structural steel building laying on the ground of the fab yard, all this windstorm engineering and everything already done, which I didn't know the rule that you had to have a house before you could have a shop. So, basically, what I'm asking on this conditional use permit is, is I would like to build the shop on the premise that by clone 2026, or just thereafter, I'm retired, I've got house plans, I'm building a house. That way, that gives me time to sell my property in Kansas, move everything down this direction, and put it in a shop, so it's not getting stolen, or, you know, the, the mill work is not something you wanna be leaving out in the weather. But, that's, that's, that's basically what this is all about. It's, it's one way Kerry and I have talked about circumventing the, the rule, I guess, for conditional use.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for him?
Ms. Ayers, and you are good with the, the PNC recommendation, or, I guess, recommendation of, of building a house, or permitting a residence by the end of 2025?
Could you hear him, Ryan?
No, I couldn't hear him.
Okay, the stipulation of the last meeting was you were to have the house built by the end of 2025, or at least?
Permit, permitted.
Yeah, I will have a house planned, I'll have a house planned and permitted by the end of '25.
All right.
Correct.
Other questions? We've been asked to hold a public hearing related to this particular issue, so at this time, we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address this issue at this time? If not, we'll return to regular business. Consider approval of the first of two readings of the ordinance, again, the conditional use permit for the purpose of building accessory use structure prior to the residential dwelling on property located 125 Lamar Drive, also known as Lot 3 Ayers, acres being 19.2809 acres, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, subject to compliance with conditions stated within this ordinance, as well as those stipulated in the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion?
I have a few questions. Is there a way, so we get a lot of these cut things that come in here for accessory buildings on property, for R1 residential, is there a way, like in the future, that we can look at, like, to change our ordinances to help with that, so you don't have to keep things?
We are looking at that. Okay. And I'd like to see a provision that, an acreage property, you know, not, not a lot in a residential neighborhood, but something, two acres or more, or would, would be allowed to have one accessory use structure prior to the residential dwelling.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I feel like, you know, it's okay to have these things on larger acreage lands, but you have to keep, I mean, conditional use permit, and then?
Well, people need to store their mowing equipment and stuff to maintain that property, and they can't. So, we are looking at that.
That's really my only comment.
I've got a question for Kerry.
Okay, go right ahead.
Kerry, if we grant this, gentleman's plans change, he doesn't end up building the house structure down there, what do we do as a, as a city with, with, we've given a, what we're expecting is a short-term, a year or two to get this done, what happens if plans change? Sometimes they do, for folks, and?
We can make a motion to approve with condition, though, correct?
Yes, and that's what we're asking for. Well, in the event that he doesn't build a home on January 1st of 2026, it is now a violation of city code, and we, we would, the initial thing would be send him the violation notice, and you've got X amount of days to file this. If he doesn't, then a, a complaint in court can be filed every single day. And if that gets to be too much, we can order him to demolish the accessory use structure.
I was gonna say?
The demolition is a total violation.
Yes.
As long as the, the gentleman understands that, you know, again, people's plans change from time to time, and, and if we go through this and allow this permanent structure, and then his plans change, that there could be some issues he's gonna have to address, you know, down the road, there would be some cost that he would incur to, to correct things.
I am confident that Mr. Ayers?
Me too.
Will, will?
Sure.
Move forward with it.
And that's the reason we're doing a cut versus?
Yes.
Other avenues, is we have that, the city has some standing there as well.
We have some enforcement authority.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I'm moving to approve item six.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other question? Now, we'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number seven, consider approval of Resolution 2024-12R, authorizing the Rockport Police Department to apply for and operate an Office of Community Policing Services Grant, administered by the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Hiring Program for the fiscal year of 2024, and authorizing the mayor to act as the executive officer and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the participation in this grant program. Chief Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, I appreciate it. So, the, the COPS grant is a grant administered by the U.S. Department of Justice, and it's a COPS hiring grant. What that does is it, it pays for up to 75%, up to $125,000 over a three-year period, to hire new police officers for the police department. So, this is the most fiscally responsible way that I could see to bring more officers into the city of Rockport, which we do need. So, if you look at the, the graphic that I have up on the screen, these are estimates for the population of Rockport, and you, and I put a modest growth estimate of 300 people a year over the year through 2020, and I think that that's real modest, and I think it, it could be a lot more than that. So, according to this graph that I have, we should be around 30 officers right now, we're sitting at 27 authorized sworn officers, and that's just gonna grow from here on out. So, what I'm asking for in, in this grant is, is to fund five new police officers, and that will be a, if you'll go to the next slide, over a three-year period, the total cost will be $1.13 million. Federal funds of that would be $625,000, our match would have to be $506,000 over a three-year period. I'll go to the next slide. This breaks it down by each year. So, year one, the city would have to fund $151,000, year two, it incrementally goes up, and at the completion of year three, the city has to agree to fund this for an additional 12 months afterwards. And at the completion of year three, the city has to agree to fund this for an additional twelve months afterwards. I would hope that we would keep it going beyond that twelve month afterwards. But there is one catch, to be totally transparent to you, and I'll show you the next slide. The grant does not fund equipment. And so each officer needs uniforms, weapons, radios, body cameras, laptops, and a police vehicle. And so police vehicles currently, right now, are around mid $85,000 area. We put an estimate of $90,000 for each vehicle, and that's 533,000 dollars. That would be a year-one cost for these officers on top of the 155,000 dollars on that year-one that we'd be responsible for with the grant.
Questions, Counsel?
And I will add that the grant may not fund all five officers. They may fund one, they may fund three, they may fund none. But we're asking for this to be funded if they do authorize the grant.
Okay.
So will you come back with a number in which they grant, like, they say we'll give you three?
So, yeah, so the grant, I have no doubt will require a, an authorization from you once the grant is funded with however many officers. So we will be coming back to Counsel for that.
So this is just to allow you to approve you to apply for the grants?
Yes, correct, correct. Yes, yeah, we'll be coming back to you if and when the grant is funded. And the grant should start being funded on October first on our fiscal year.
Okay, we would have some quite a number.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Will you come back to, for us to accept the grant?
This is not locking you in to those funds. This is just asking for us to apply for it and see what we can get out of it.
Chief or Mayor, have we participated in the COPS grants before?
We have. It was probably back, as far back as like ninety-seven or eight. We got three officers one time, and the next time we applied, we didn't get any. And it was same kind of thing then. The economy being what it was, there was a time that we went without new officers for quite a while, and this is about as good an opportunity you have as putting more officers on, because it'll cost us 25% of the cost of those officers. We have to foot the other costs naturally. But we have been, had chiefs asking for additional people for the last five years, and they hadn't got them yet. So this is a great opportunity, and applying for the grant, I think, is a great thing to do.
I have a couple of questions. I just wanted to make sure that we're very confident that if you apply for it, we're not gonna be held accountable if we can't afford it. Because we haven't even seen budget numbers for this this year.
Absolutely, yeah. So once we come back with the numbers of what they approve, if they approve anything, nothing is binding at all. This doesn't bind us to anything at all. We can refuse. If they offer something and you don't approve it, we absolutely can refuse it. We just can't, don't, not accept the funds.
So it can be like a menu, too, if we can't do three?
I'm sorry.
If we can't do three, we can maybe do two, or like, we can do one. We can just accept.
So we'll come back with the numbers that they give us, and whatever they give us, then we'll come to you and we'll see what we can fund, hopefully all of it. And then we can go back to the grant administrators and see what they say. But we're not locked in to anything, not at all.
Is there a way to negotiate if we say, you know, they come back saying they'll give us three, but we can only afford two? That's when you go back and propose to them?
That's certainly something that we can go to those grant administrators and discuss with them, absolutely.
Make motion to approve item seven.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Now, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider approval of resolution 2024-13R, authorizing Rockport Police Department to utilize restricted Texas opioid settlement funds to purchase an incinerator, providing for severability, finding and determining that the meeting which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, and establishing an effective date. Chief.
All right. So the city of Rockport has received funds in 2023 from the National Opioid Settlement. City of Rockport, I believe, Robbie, we have currently over $20,000 in our account. Those are restricted funds. They can only be used for very specific things. And so we have drug take-back programs, or prescription drug take-back programs. We also have a large amount of drugs in our property room that we typically have to travel across the state, or even in New Mexico, to go to drug disposal locations. This is something that we could use these funds to purchase an incinerator that's specifically made to incinerate narcotics. And we can have it here in the city on police department property, and we can dispose of our prescription drug take-back programs as well as our evidentiary drugs that we have in our property room that are no longer of evidentiary value. So the cost of the, it's a fifty-five-gallon drum device that completely incinerates what you put inside of it. There's no pollution to the air. It's approved through different environmental agencies. And the cost of that's gonna be sixty-six, fifty-seven for this particular device.
All right. Questions?
What does the, I'm sorry, what does the county do with Ayers now? Is this something we can share with them, share the cost, and maybe they participate in some of this?
Absolutely, and the county has received funds in the, I want to say, they've received, you know, six-digit figures from the opioid settlements. So they have a large amount of funds as well. But, yeah, absolutely, this can be shared with other agencies. There's other agencies that take drugs in and dispose of them. You know, a lot of agencies charge to do that as well. That's not something that we'd be interested in doing. Absolutely can be shared with our county partners.
The total cost on this, about $6,700. Can we ask the folks over at the county, see if they want to split it with us? If they've got a large amount of funds, is that something we can do?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, have we had any discussions with, no, we haven't. That's certainly something we could talk to them about.
Yeah, that could cut the city's cost in half, especially if they've got funds sitting there that are restricted.
And I don't know if, I don't know what they, if they still have funds available. I don't know if they use funds, but it's a question we can certainly ask.
Correct. The funds that we have are very, there's very strict guidelines, which you can use the opioid funds for, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's not general fund money. This is opioid settlement money that you're using to...
This is opioid settlement money, yes. And there is more money that should be coming in within the next year or so, I believe, and it'll be more than what we have now. So it's a continuous settlement that more money keeps coming in.
Any other questions?
I move to approve item eight as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, and we will consult with the county on that.
Item number nine, consider the approval of a request from Andrew Basner, Basner, for temporary street closures of Cornwall between North Austin Street and North Magnolia Streets, downtown Rockport for the weekend of July the thirteenth, fourteenth. That's good one.
So this is the requestor, and I didn't know what time you were needing it for, so I filled in that for you. However, he originally had asked for several weekends throughout the rest of the year, and staff had recommended due to the holiday, the July Fourth holiday, and the traffic flow downtown, that we were gonna recommend not approving the July Fourth weekend. And then we asked, told him we would bring this request forward. And then the rest of them, he's gonna follow through the upcoming process that we should have adopted by the end of July, which is that event, special events ordinance, which includes the street closures. He did provide all the required documents for this request.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, tell us what it is you plan on doing and so forth.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Looking at doing second Saturday events in downtown Rockport. They will be community, family-based, family-focused events every second weekend of the month through the end of the year. Love craft vendors, food and drink vendors, music and entertainment. Just community events, help support local businesses downtown by drawing people into the area as well. We anticipate that we could have anywhere from thirty to forty, you know, individual booths, vendors, and different attractions that we could bring to the area for the, for those monthly events.
Will these go on the same time Market Days does?
No, sir. Market Days is third weekend. This would be second weekend.
Okay. Questions, Counsel?
It states that you sent out a letter of intent to the surrounding neighbors. Did we receive any feedback from that that would not be in support of this?
Yeah, I have their signatures providing their support and no objection.
Thank you.
The signature's on the packet they were signed. And you did get, and it looks like you've got traffic or in the garbage as well.
Yeah, we'll be, we will be providing cleanup services, you know, after the event as well as during the event. We'll have more trash cans, line trash cans, and garbage collection. I am requesting from the city road closure barriers for the Magnolia and the Austin side of Cornwall.
Chief, will this create any kind of problem for you as far as you know?
And this is free entry for the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Free to go?
There's, yeah, there's no cost for entry. It's free and open to the public.
Any other questions?
I move to approve agenda item number nine as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Now, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Do I need to...
Item number ten, consider approval of changing utility billing providers from Data Pros and award the utility billing services to Expedia Mail. Mr. Sherrell.
As was mentioned earlier, yeah, with Data Pros, there was, a critical legal disclosure was omitted that was sent out, and that required us to have to roll back the outside city limits rates, as we're all aware. And so the instruction was us to move away from Data Pros. So we went out and we obtained three quotes from different billing providers, Expedia Mail, Ucio, and Info Send. And did an analysis, did a check references. And through, we came down to recommending Expedia Mail. Primarily, there's no contract. We wanted to kind of try it before you buy it, tight deal, want to have maximum flexibility. Yes, it is a little more expensive, but there is no contract, and there are no deposits as well. And so we're wanting to try these guys out. They have a good recommendation. There's some testimonials included in the packet as well. And so we're asking, and we were also reimbursed for one of the billing that was messed up. Data Pros did fully reimburse the city for that billing that was messed up, where that disclosure was omitted. So we're asking to go with the Expedia Mail, please.
All right. Questions, Counsel?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to address a little bit of the statement that was made that the public, or the citizens to be heard. And I feel like it needs to be said, but we have refunded all the citizens, and we've done our best part of trying to move forward and go with another person. There was a mistake made. Whoever's fault it was, cities or these people, there was a mistake made. We have admitted to it, we have refunded. And I think that going on, I just, my personal thing, going on with this process of suing, or this lawsuit that they're going with, is this gonna cost our citizens more taxpayer money when they've already been refunded? We've already admitted fault, and we've already repaid. So I just really want to clarify that for everyone out there, that this is this lawsuit that we're having to deal with over just who did what. When we already refunded, it's gonna be costing the citizens more money by going forward with it. So just want to make that clear.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item ten as presented.
I second.
Have a motion second. Do I have any further questions? Now, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number eleven, consider possible approval to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with RBC Capital to solicit bids for the gas system.
Mayor, Counsel, last May, the citizens authorized us to sell the gas system. We've spent a little bit of time delving into the value of that, and we actually had hired RBC to give us a valuation on that gas system. In the process of that, we determined that they could also kind of market the system for us to maybe a broader group than just the locals. And so I would like your permission to enter into a contract with them to go ahead and market that and sell that. Their fee for that will be a percentage, or the lesser of, to, I think it's in your packet, hundreds of thousands of dollars. No?
Not that.
It's not in your packet?
Yeah, it was, I think it was one ninety-five or something.
Okay, one ninety-five, yeah. So they have a percent, if they bring us something larger, they'll take a percent for the one ninety-five, which will more than likely get out of the system. So I would like your permission to go ahead with them to let them market that and sell that for us.
Questions?
Have they given you any data? I mean, they've done this twenty-two times in the past, and they, any rough ideas of where we're gonna end up on this? Is it gonna be a huge money loser for us, or gonna cost us a bunch, or could we make a little bit?
I would like to not say that, because it's still gonna be put out on the market. We'd love to get as much as we can for the system. The company has never done a gas system. They've done public utilities, but they have not done gas. So they're confident, though, that with their other utility contacts, that they'll be able to generate a good interest. We know the number that we can take and be okay.
All right.
Is there a timeframe associated with the...
As soon as I get the sign, I'm gonna tell them to go. I don't, they have a pretty extensive process, but I'm gonna say not more than a year.
You think a year of them soliciting bids, probably?
Marketing soliciting. So, yeah. I mean, our direction is, please, go now.
If they don't find a buyer, or can't bring us anything, is there, I'm sure there's some cost we're gonna incur there?
Well, I can't imagine a scenario where they will not bring us a buyer. But they don't get any money because they haven't sold it.
I have a question. You said that this particular company has not done an actual market sale with a gas company before. Did we have any alternative options that do have experience with gas bill?
So we have a, yes-ish. We have a consultant that was going to reach out to his local contacts and kind of see if any of them were interested. So it was on a lot smaller scale. We were asking for contract with RBC because they can go broader. They think that they'll have some bigger investors, that they can package it with some things, and maybe make it look a little bit different than just calling the nearby gas distributor and saying, hey, do you want to add our system? They might have more capital that they can roll ours in with and get us a better price. And if they fail, they fail. We call the contact and say, hey, call the guy next door.
But we're still, are we, we're still engaged with our original...
We have, he has finished the valuation contract, so that is complete.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Move to approve item eleven as presented.
Have a motion, have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Now, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number twelve, consider rejection of the only bid for the Main Street Visitor's Kiosk and Art Installation Kimberly.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. What we are bringing for you tonight is basically the response from, a request for proposals that we've done now twice. The first time, we did not get any responses. The second time, we received one response. However, it was well over what we had budgeted for it, and almost twice what we had budgeted, which was also almost twice what the engineer expected it to come in at. This is just for the infrastructure and landscaping and that type of work on the kiosk, Visitor's Kiosk and Art Installation area. So at this time, staff is recommending that we decline this bid, reject the bid, and then attempt to still go out on our, by ourselves, and still bid the pieces of it out. But those pieces would still be brought back to you for review and consideration, because we don't want to circumvent any, anything coming to you.
because we don't want to circumvent any, anything coming to y'all and still go through the bid process. We would just try to do it on a smaller scale and get this done a little bit quicker.
Have you prioritized which parts of this current plan would come first?
That is still being discussed.
Actually, we have prioritized it. The kiosk has, the visitors' kiosk and the flat work for the art installation have to come out of this ba- the balance of this budget. There can be a little bit of flexibility in the amount of flat work that gets done for the art installation, but, um, I think Ms. Day is already working on getting us, um, a commissioned piece for that. So we're going to need to be ahead on that. We are going to have to do the, um, the access to the kiosks and the restrooms, just kind of as a priority. But other than that, those things are prioritized. Everything else is secondary. Landscaping, that's going to be secondary. The trees are being donated. We can plant them ourselves. It's not going to cost us any money. Some things like that. Um, we will be asking for more hot funds this year, not a lot, but a little bit more. And we'll, we'll put it in little by little, but we have to get the kiosk and the flat work for the art out of this.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to, um, reject the only bid for the Main Street.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Now we'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Upstate.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous with one abstention. Item number 13, City Manager.
Mayor, Council, we have a new city manager's update. Shelley's whipping us all into shape here, so, um, it's going to be fun. All right? So, um, I'm going to go through this briefly. I'm going to hit the high points. It will be on the website. It'll be on the city manager's page under city manager's update. We'll do this monthly. Every department member contributes to it. I'm not going to replace your weekly report yet, but we may get there. We'll just see how much, um, duplication we're doing here. So, um, if you go to the next slide, Carrie has entered her development thing, uh, items on here. She has two residential subdivisions potentially, and then the four commercials listed right there. Sorry, you don't get to ask questions about those. Additionally, they put in the amount of money and valuation of their, no, don't try to read it yet. Go on the website. Of their prospective permits for the past month, I guess. So we can look at how much they've collected. The other part of this is we're going to be looking for very meaningful metrics out of each department. So if you see something that you don't think is useful or you think of something that is more useful, give me a ping. We'll get it up there. We want everything that, uh, we put up there to be useful, so. The next thing we have is the finance report. It's the same finance report that you had emailed to you earlier. It'll just be part of this report going forward and it will also be on the website in the same spot. Let's see. Unspent bond slide. I know we've, um, talked a lot about the unspent bonds. This is going to be ongoing. You can see that all of the money is either, um, been spent or is being allocated on a current project. So hopefully we'll be done with, um, the unspent bonds and the ARPA funds very quickly. Hotel occupancy tax grant funding. This is over, this has gone through a major overhaul. We're, um, getting this orderly and cohesive and, um, it's, it's not without pain, but we're doing it. Uh, we did receive 21 hot applications this year for 1.6 million dollars. We only collect about 1.2, so, um, there's going to be some, some pains there in that that 1.6 doesn't account for our city projects or any of our staffing time that we reimburse ourselves, things like that. I know I promised you that you would get your binders for hot taxes at this meeting. I promised wrong. I hope to have them by the end of the week. We've got a lot of work to do on those. But they will be here at July 9th, workshop at 5 o'clock. The applicants will be here to answer questions. Police Department, the chief gave us a comparison on all these things, 23, 24. Calls for service, that's going to include Lee in there, uh, in communications for her, her department. You can see we're up. We're up on the good stuff. We're up on the bad stuff. While we're down on traffic accidents and up on contacts, so maybe there's a correlation there. I have the engineers report next. He's going to come and give you that next, but next month he'll have it to me in time to put it in. Yeah, it's, it's on your bias, but next, next month it's going to be in here. Um, if we go through Public Works, Utility Connections, Water Usage, um, annual water usage, rainfall for the month, we are in stage two water restrictions. You can see our rainfall days graphed out there. Human Resources, she added her, um, ongoing, um, employee hirings, firings, terminations, et cetera. Um, that's the statistics for the last 30 days, four new hires, three separations, three workman comp claims. Ironically, those were within three days, but we're working on those. Upcoming meeting, July 9th, Budget Workshop, Base Budget and Hot Tax Discussion, uh, starting at 1:00. Then you have a council member, uh, a council meeting that evening, so it's going to be a long day. Shirley, Shelley will feed us. July 16th, there's a Budget Workshop. The, um, origin of that is yet to be determined. We're waiting on some further information from an outside source. We'll let you know. July 30th, um, another potential workshop. We are just getting them on the schedule. If we don't need them, we will cancel them. August 6th, we'll do the utility rate, uh, and financial changes, tax rate, utility rate, tax rate, financial change. And then we have scheduled in for another Budget Workshop if we needed. After that, we go into the approval process. Uh, coming up, Special Events Ordinance, we are, I think we're probably 99% done with that. Also, on the resolution ends, we will modify our, our meeting schedule for October, November, December. If y'all remember, we do that every year. We do one meeting in October because the first one falls at the same time as T M L. We do one meeting in November as the first one falls, the week, the second one falls the week of Thanksgiving. And in December, we do an early meeting and cancel the second one due to Christmas. Um, so we'll be changing those. And then text range and text pool, those are our investment areas and we need to change the signatories on those to represent our current staff. So those are things you'll be seeing coming up. I'll turn it over to you and, uh, you'll get a quick engineering report. And I don't need an executive session tonight unless somebody up there has a question on anything listed.
I have a question on your report. The, the utility rates for August 9th. Do you think there would be any chance we have any preliminary data back from our?
So yes.
Study?
There is the one, I think the 16th, we are trying to schedule, um, Dan Jackson, Jackson Johnson, Jackson, to come and discuss those numbers with you. So.
Okay.
We, we've gone through the preliminary stuff. He's waiting on a little bit more data. But then on the 16th, that is intended to be the day that he comes. We may have to move that just because his schedule, he has a council meeting in some town every Tuesday, basically, so, um, yes.
But you think, we think by August 9th, we'd have some, some pretty good data.
August 9th?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
To have some pretty good data to.
Yeah, no, no, no. We'll have it, we'll have it by the end of, the end of this month, the end of July, sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all.
Is that it? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Like I said, if you think of any more useful data you would like to see, let me know because this will go on the website for everybody to give a look and hopefully it'll be useful.
Thank you.
So, uh, I want to apologize to Vanessa for giving this, like.
Keep, keep doing it.
Well, I ha- I'm a firm believer that, uh, no excuse is a good excuse. My excuse is I'm getting married in four days. I have had a stressful couple of weeks. I do have a packet in front of you guys. It's a, a table of projects that we're working on, uh, the green heading on the top. The first project, uh, going from left to right, uh, project number one is the wastewater treatment plant, the, uh, 2023 tramp plant improvements. The scope of work, um, is the new office building, uh, new entrance gate and a new cha- new chain link fence along F M 2165, a new aerobic digester and thickener, and the replacement of a chlorine contact equipment and various miscellaneous improvements. The current phase is construction. Construction is being, uh, completed by R P Can- Constructors Incorporated. Con- construction started on March 4th, 2024 and is 8% complete. Total construction costs for the project are $4,611,000. The, uh, recently completed activities are the installation of the electrical duct banks in the new office building, preparation of the foundation for the new office building, installation of the new grit equipment and dewatering and excavation of the new digester. And, uh, Councilman Anderson, I believe, uh, you had asked about, uh, issues with the galvanized coating last time. So I actually went out to site last week, um, saw the new equipment. The issue was that it was gouged in transit to the site. Um, it was regalvanized. I inspected the new galvanization last week. It's very thick, very adequate. It looked great. Not a coating expert, but I, I'm familiar with, um, galvanizing.
I'm sure that's something that happens fairly frequently in transit. As long as they addressed it and, and cold galved it right there.
I, no, not cold galve, hot did galvanize.
Oh.
Yes, sir. So it had to go back to a treatment plant.
Oh.
Um, yeah. So I'm on my 10th boat trailer. I'm very familiar with, with good galvanizing versus bad galvanizing. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next project is the, uh, G L O Community Development Block Grant Drainage Improvement Project. So this is four separate projects, um, throughout the city. Project one, approximately 900 foot of nine by five precast box culvert and 2,500 linear feet of ditch regrading. Work on this portion has not, uh, started. It's pending completion of other, uh, the other three mini projects within this main project. The construction cost of that first portion of trailer in Thule are 2,218, is 200, apologize, 2,218,000 dollars. Project four, South Anne and East Hackberry, um, has, uh, 240 linear feet of 42 inch R C P, 121 linear feet of 24 inch R C P, 80 feet of 18 inch R C P and approximately 150 linear feet of ditch regrading. This project is 100% completed. I think they just repaved it, uh, recently. The construction cost on that was 713,000 dollars and is awaiting a walkthrough inspection. The next project, Project Five, is Market at Church, which is 282 linear feet of 30 inch R C P. It is 42% complete. Recent completed activities are the installation of 30 inch R C P, two junction boxes and an outfall. The remaining activities to be completed are the asphalt pavement repair and restoration of the outfall and bank. That project cost is 227, approximately 228,000 dollars. Project six, Sabanaw, Anne Orleans, Laurel and Magnolia. Uh, this project consists of 840 linear feet of six by four precast box culvert, 30 linear feet of three by three ca- precast box culvert, 48 linear feet of three by two precast box culvert and 176 linear feet of 18 inch R C P. This project is 42% complete. The remaining activities, Gare Underground has completed the remaining utility work, not completed by Burnside. Um, they are awaiting a resolution for the latent defect, um, um, ongoing latent defect, um, issue that we have. This project cost is 3,161,000, approximately 3, 3,162,000 dollars. And the total project cost for that project is 6,322,000 dollars. The next project is the FEMA Enterprise and Maple Drainage Improvements. This consists of 640 linear feet of six by four, uh, reinforced concrete box culvert, approximately 800 foot of five by four reinforced concrete box culvert, 62 feet of four by three reinforced concrete box culvert, 1,387 linear feet of 42 inch R C P, 991 linear feet of 36 inch R C P, 235 linear feet of 18 inch R C P, head wall and outfall. Construction, 16 junction boxes and two curb outlets. And, uh, moving forward, I might not belabor y'all with that many details on the scope and just, uh, keep it as, as simple as drainage improvements. This is, the design phase is completed. The plans are 100% completed and sealed. The plans were sent to Texas Department of Emergency Management for FEMA review on, uh, October 15th, 2021. Uh, plans are currently under FEMA review and Urban Engineering is actively requesting updates from T D M. The actual, the last page in your packet is an email to T D M and a response from T D M, just saying they acknowledged it and they're trying to get us answers. Um, the engineering estimate, estimated cost is 1,910,116 dollars. And, uh, as soon as we get FEMA approval, we can move forward with the bidding phase and construction phase.
That's 2021 dollars, correct, uh, the estimate?
So I, I don't know when that estimate was put together. Uh, you, you may know better than I. I, I, the plans were sealed in 2021, so that might be a fair assumption. Yes, sir. And we can get an updated, uh, engineering estimate on that. You know, I don't know. I wasn't personally involved, but I can find, I can get that answered for you. Texas Department of Agriculture, the T D A, uh, Klugee Trail and Holly Road Street Improvement Project. This is a, a street reconstruction project, 3,125 linear feet of Klugee Trail and 2,675 linear feet of Holly Road. The preliminary phase is complete. Uh, we delivered the, uh, gen- engineering contracts. We worked with the grant managers, got the engineering contract completed. That's with city staff being reviewed right now. Uh, next phase is the, uh, design phase. So funding available from Texas Department of Agriculture is 500,000 and the required city match is, uh, 75,000. The next project, FEMA Hazard Mitigation, um, is a, it's three separate applications for generators at, uh, various lift stations. Application one was for generators at the Rockport Fire Station and Highway 188 Pump Station, uh, North Building. Application two were generators for Ivy Lane Pump Station and the Highway 188 Pump Station, South Building. Same, uh, pump station, one application was for the North Building, one application was for the South Building. Application three was for mobile generators for repowering the city's lift stations. Uh, the preliminary phase, uh, FEMA application process, um, were, I have 0% in there, and again, I apologize, I, I've had my head in the clouds today. We're working, those applications have been, uh, delivered to FEMA. We're actively answering R F Is. Joseph Quilinton, who's the Texas Department of Emergency Management Representative, I met him in South Padre. I believe I, I told you all at the last council meeting, I ran into him in South Padre, went and grabbed and shook his hand and said, hey, City of Rockport's waiting on their generator applications. He said, um, you guys are the first ones to even get R F Is. Uh, that's good news. You shouldn't have any problems. So fingers crossed that's the case. That total costs, uh, estimated cost is 985,000 dollars. Urban Engineering, additional projects, uh, not under construction. We're currently working on a Rockport Wastewater Treatment Plant Discharge Permit. We are 10% completed with that process. Uh, we had an agreement executed on May 30th of 2024. We're progressing through those T C E Q forms. Right now, we're coordinating with the testing lab for the effluent testing and cost proposal to send to the city. Last project are the engineering reviews of Platts Middles to the city. Currently, we've completed all of our Platts Middles. I believe, uh, I don't believe the city's waiting on anything from us right now at this time. Second page are, are just some construction photos. The top three photos are the Community Development Block Grant, Street and Drainage Project Market at Church. Um, so some surface restoration going on there. Uh, they've completed the install of the, um, drainage improvements. Um, next project is South Anne and East and Hackberry. Uh, that is the, the paving has been completed on that por- portion of the project. And the last three photos at the bottom, on the bottom left, that is the new foundation, uh, for the new office building. The middle picture is the grit removal. The middle picture is the grit removal equipment being installed, or having been installed. In the last picture is the digester excavation, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If y'all have any input, or if y'all need anything changed, or need more or less information, please let me know, let city staff know, and I'll make sure it happens.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your nuptials. If, if you, if you're looking for an escape, police chief is here. They can lock. Give you time to think.
On Project Five, the outfall, the outfall at the end of Market, and Mike may know already, but that, the head wall is under about two to three foot of beach, so we have no outfall on that discharge right now.
So it's been totally covered up from the storm surge?
We dug for a couple hours yesterday.
I, well, I, I saw photos of, I live on a canal, and our, our house, half, our dock, everything was underwater, so I totally understand. We'll work with the contractor on a solution and trying to get that excavated, and.
And I think the original outfall, it's, the, the parallel pipes, one, one is a little bit closer to the, the rock ruin that goes out. I believe it to be under beach now, too.
Okay.
So I'm just concerned about the, the lack of outfall that we have on that.
Yeah, certainly, absolutely, especially for the drainage that it affects upstream.
Yes, so that, that could be why we had water blow, maybe one of the reasons why we had water blowing out of the main holes is our outfall was blocked.
Absolutely. That's something I'll take back to the office right away, and, and we'll start looking at. I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
Y'all have a wonderful evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Next time on the agenda is reports from council. Ward one.
Trying to stay dry the last couple of weeks over my side of town. I'm looking forward to have a merchants meeting this week as well as our CAD meetings. So a lot upcoming, not so much other than staying dry for the last two weeks. Nothing else to report.
All right. Matt?
Ward two, it'll be, thank you for the invitation. I'm gonna be attending the Fulton Community Watch. A Neighborhood Watch coming up here in another, another few days, and I'm preparing some of my subdivisions in my area, gonna meet with their HOAs and folks, so trying to get out there and meet folks.
All right.
Thanks, everybody, for staying dry as I could. I, the last, I guess since the water proceeded, I drove around some of the areas of Ward Three, especially Keelagro, Harbor Oaks. Keelagro, you can see the wash line is, is essentially the water line where the water level was, way up into people's yards and into some of the houses. It, it looks like. I did notice today that we do have some pretty significant street damage in there, unfortunately. And I think as it gets, the temperatures continue to get hotter and hotter, some of that moisture that's underneath the asphalt may continue to deteriorate our streets. So I just asked the citizens to be cognizant of that, that, you know, there, there could be some street damage due to this water, as well as downtown and, and South Rockport. That's where a lot of our main areas were hit, so we're just gonna take it on the chin and keep going from here. That's all I have.
I attended the HOA meeting for the Rockport Country Club, and I had Chief Anderson over here came and talked about speed limits, and they're, they're ready to lower their speed limit to twenty-five, so they're working on getting a petition and getting that kind of filed in front of council, so something that might come in front of us later on. My, my ward did fairly well with the, with the rep flooding, so I was very blessed in that area. I think Enterprise is probably the only area that's close to what flooded, so I'm happy with the project that happened in the Rockport Country Club, and I'm happy with the results of what, in my ward at least with the flooding. Is it? Huh? Project worked, yes. And that's it?
I just wanna thank Mike and Chief for y'all's work when all that flooding was going on. I, I know that there was a lot of water in a lot of places, and there was water in places people really didn't like it being there. But we didn't have the serious kind of problems we have had in the past because of work that y'all did. And you helped the downtown area. I know that you blocked off Austin Street in a hurry, and we didn't have any big trucks going down there seeing how fast they could go through that water and wash away the inside of the stores. There was, a lot of that thing happened in the past, but I appreciate y'all and your people that work for you. Thank you very much. And I don't have anything else. Did you say it wasn't necessary with?
Unless y'all have something for me, I don't have anything for you.
Most adjourned.
I have a motion adjourned. I have a second, second. We're adjourned.